My hallelujah belongs to you. My hallelujah belongs to you. Sing with me.
My hallelujah belongs to you. My hallelujah belongs to you.
Oh, let him know that he deserves it.
You deserve it. You deserve it. You deserve it. You deserve it.
Oh, yes, you deserve it, Lord.
You deserve it.
All the glory and all the honor.
You deserve it.
Oh, yes, you do, Lord.
You deserve it. You deserve it.
All the glory and all the honor.
You deserve it. You deserve it.
Sing it one more time.
You deserve it. You deserve it.
Yes, Lord. Oh, we know that you deserve all the glory and all the honor with praise your name is.
For the Lord God Almighty. For the Lord God Almighty. You are holy. Holy.
Are you Lord God?
Almighty. What is the name? What is the name? You are holy. Are you Lord God? What is the name? What is the name? You are holy. Holy.
Are you Lord God?
Are you Lord God? Almighty.
Your glory is the name.
What is the name?
Oh, my goodness.
What is the name?
You are holy.
You are holy. Are you Lord God? Almighty. What is the name? What is the name? You are holy. Are you Lord God? What is the name? What is the name? What is the name? How great.
How great.
How great is our God. Sing with me. How great is our God. I will sing. How great. How great is our God.
Lord, let's sing it with the heart.
How great is our God. Sing with me. How great is our God. I will sing. How great. How great is our God.
How great is our God.
How great is our God. Sing with me. How great is our God. I will sing. How great. How great is our God.
He is singing all the morning.
In the name of our Lord.
He is worthy to be praised.
He is worthy to be praised. And my heart will sing. How great is our God.
He is the name of our Lord. He is worthy to be praised.
He is worthy to be praised.
And my heart will sing.
And my heart will sing. How great is our God. In the name of our Lord.
And he is worthy.
He is worthy to be praised.
And my heart will sing.
And my heart will sing.
How great.
How great is our God. How great is our God. Sing with me. How great is our God. I will sing. How great. How great is our God. How great is our God. Sing with me. How great is our God. I will sing. How great. How great is our God.
Hallelujah, hallelujah, praise the Lord, praise the Lord.
I want to thank Jesus for the plan of salvation. Just to say, Lord, I love you. For you understand. I want to be there on the great judgment's morning. To touch all the nail prints in his feet and his hands. One morning at daybreak, a crowd slowly gathered. They were walking my Lord up old Calvary's hill. So sad was the scene there. The birds hushed their singing. Like a lamb, he was humble to his father's own will. I want to thank Jesus for the plan of salvation. Just to say, Lord, I love you. For you understand. I want to be there on the great judgment's morning. To touch all the nail prints in his feet and his hands. To touch all the nail prints in his feet and his hands.
I come to the garden alone. While thou is still on the roses. And the voice I hear falling on my ear. And he walks with me. And he talks with me. And he tells me that I am his own. And the joy we share as we tear. He speaks at the sound of his voice. It's so sweet. The birds hush their singing. And the melody that he gave to me. And he walks with me. And he talks with me. And he tells me that I am his own. And the joy we share as we tear. So I stay in the garden with him. Though the night surround me before me. But he bids me go through the voice. Oh, his voice tell me. Lord, I hear you calling, you calling, you calling. And he walks, walks with me. And he talks, he talks with me. And he tells me that I am. I belong to the Lord. Oh, and the joy we share as we tear. None other, no one can ever, ever, ever know. Nobody knows me like Jesus.
Now, welcome to the Apostolic Faith Northeast Virtual Special Meeting this Sunday morning. We thank God for the solo. He works, he talks with me. God, he did walk and talk with us beginning Thursday. And he's still walking and talking with us and in us. We thank God for that coming from Brooklyn 265. Before that, we heard Organ Prelude. We will glorify from East Bridgewater. Piano selection, shine, Jesus shine from Ocean Side. Opening selection, "To Ape," the plan of salvation from Ocean Side. Right now, we're going to join the congregational singing together. So let us all rejoice and let God use our voices in rejoicing this holy day. Give him praise. He has been good to us throughout the week and he's still doing it right now. Let us all sing together.
For this song service, the first hymn we're going to sing is "Here Am I to Worship." Light of the world, you came down into darkness. Open my eyes, let me see. Beauty that bathed this heart. Adore you. Over the lives spent with you. And here I am to worship. Here I am to bow down. Here I am to say that you're my God. You're all together lovely. All together worthy. All together wonderful to me. King of all days, of the heavens. Oh, yes, the heaven above. How great you came to the earth, you created. All for your sake became whole. And here I am to worship. Here I am to bow down. Here I am to say that you're my God. You're all together lovely. All together worthy. All together wonderful to me. I'll never know how magical to see my sin upon thy cross. I'll never know how magical to see my sin upon thy cross. I'll never know how magical to see my sin upon thy cross. I'll never know how magical to see my sin upon thy cross. And here I am to worship. Here I am to bow down. Here I am to say that you're my God. You're all together lovely. All together worthy. All together wonderful to me. Here I am to worship. Now, we're going to sing "Ancient Words." This is the second song, "Ancient Words."
My words long reserved for a walk in this world. They reserve God of the Lord. Oh, let me ancient words impart. Words of life, words I hope give us strength. Help us both in this world. Wherever we roam, ancient words will guide us home. Ancient words have a truth changing me and changing you. We have come with all the heart. Oh, let me ancient words impart. The words of our faith.
The words of our faith hand it down to this day. Into us through our lives, oh, in our faithful words of Christ. Our words long reserved for a walk in this world. May the sound of God's heart, oh, let the ancient words impart. Ancient words of truth, changing me and changing you. We have come with all the hearts, oh, let the ancient words impart. Ancient words of truth, changing me and changing you. We have come with all the hearts, oh, let the ancient words impart. Our prayer song is the chorus, "I love you, Lord," and I lift my voice to worship you. Oh, my soul rejoice. Take joy, my king, in what you hear, and let it be a sweet, sweet sound in your ear. I love you more. And I lift my voice to worship you. Oh, my soul rejoice. Take joy, my king, in what you hear. And let it be a sweet, sweet sound in your ear. One more time. I love you more. And I lift my voice to worship you. Oh, my soul rejoice. Take joy, my king, in what you hear. And let it be a sweet, sweet sound in your ear.
As we look onto God this morning, we want to commit all the prayer requests. We want to commit the country into the Lord in prayer for those that are grieving and those that are sick, for those that are shorting. And more importantly, we want to commit the service this morning unto God. We want to commit the preacher, and we also want to commit that souls will be saved. Let's pray in prayer. Everlasting Father, we thank you for this opportunity, for this Northeast Reviver. We thank you for the morning devotional service. Father, as we look unto you, there are many that are looking unto this way. Father, we are praying for those that are bereaved at this time, that you come and comfort them. We are also praying right now for those that are sick or for those that have one problem or the other, that you go and touch them, Lord, Father. And we commit the service this morning unto you. We commit the speaker unto you, Lord. We pray that you come down from heaven and speak to our soul. Father, Lord, after the service today, people are going to go to the prayer room to pray. We are praying that you come and save, come and sanctify, come and baptize, come and heal. Father, Lord, since this revival have started, maybe somebody have not gotten anything. And they are saying, "Lord, must I go an empty-handed?" We are praying that nowhere we go an empty-handed here, that today that you come and do great and mighty things. We pray for all our leaders. We pray that you continue to come and be with us. We pray for the nation. We pray that you come down and be with all of us. And we are strangers and pilgrims on this way. And when the trumpet of God shall sound, we are praying that you come down and take all of us to heaven at last. In Jesus' name we have prayed.
Amen. And we welcome you again to the Apostolic Faith Northeast Virtual Cam Meeting. We believe the Lord, whom you have been seeking since Thursday, has met with you, and we give him glory. So for announcement this morning, we will have prayer meeting immediately after the devotional service this morning. You will dial into the number 712-770-5505. Access code 812-281-POUND. Immediately after the preaching this morning, I hope you did dial in at 10:30. The volume of prayer, nobody could hear or say stop. It has to take a special means for the leader to speak to the people. So continue with that mood after the preaching this morning. And we know that the Lord, that you are hungry and thirsty, will fill your cup to overflowing, that you will go and bring others. This evening, we will have our eight o'clock PM. And that also will be followed, will be preceded by prayer beginning at seven o'clock, the same number, 712-770-5505. So we are asking that you send us your prayer requests, feedback about this special meeting, your testimonies. Send those through the local email apostolicfaithphiladelphia@outlook.com. So, or you send it to apostolicfaith.org. That is our central Apostolic Faith headquarters. And you go in there, click to contact us, and you can speak to a live person. There's a phone number there you can call to speak to a live person, or you leave your information, and they will get back with you quickly. You can leave your email there, your prayer request there also. Or you can leave prayer requests on the Apostolic Faith East Coast website, apostolicfaithec.org. And you can leave your prayer request there. And there are YouTube channels that will be displayed on the screen where you can replay the meetings that we had on Thursday, on Friday, and Saturday concert, and even this morning also, the whole day. So look into that channels and let others know. But we want to give special thanks to God this morning, for he that too it has brought us. This is our first Northeast special meeting. All the locations come together to hold our first special meeting. And this was granted us by our superintendent, Sister Josephine McElven from Washington, DC. She organized that we do this, and he that too the Lord has brought us. So, and then another good thing that is done for us this year, we have Washington, DC and Reston, Virginia as part of our Northeast region. So take note of that. Washington, DC and Reston, Virginia is part of our Northeast region. To God be the glory. And the person in charge of those two that will be attending meetings with us, the rest of the pastors, is Brother Oludare Owolabi. That is the one, the name, that will be attending our regular meetings, pastors' meetings with us in the Northeast. Sister Josephine is our superintendent, and he is still there in DC, working in DC, but he has all the five regions in the district to take care of. So Brother Oludare Owolabi is going to be working with us in place in all the regular meetings in details. So we also have Brooklyn 265 Lafayette Avenue, Reverend Hirokluo Wyatt Jr. is the pastor there. And in Brooklyn 2, 200 Utica Avenue, Brother Ford is the pastor there. And in Ocean Side, Brother Alfred Ikotu is the pastor there. And in the Bronx, Brother Andres Mercedes is the pastor there. In Linden, New Jersey, Brother Smith is the pastor there. Patterson, New Jersey, Alfredo Gumps Senior is the pastor there. Worton, New Jersey, Brother James Timbila is the pastor there. And in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, Eneguen is the pastor there. In East Bridgewater, Brother Lano is the pastor there. And in this program, we cannot list all the names of those that the pastors have brought in us to take part in the different activities, in the media, in the music, in the different things that is done, in the singing, in the concert, in testimony, and in prayer. All those come from all these ten locations. And they are brought by the pastors. The Bible says, "Behold, how good and how pleasant it is for brethren to dwell together in unity." All the songs that are composed come from all these churches together. We walk together in unity, and he that too the Lord has brought us. One thing we want to leave with all the pastors, to group all those people that we have not mentioned their names, that you brought them, and encourage the brethren. Jesus said, "Peter, Peter, the devil has desired to have you, but I have prayed for you, and when you are converted, strengthen the brethren." So we want to encourage the brethren, to strengthen the brethren, to know that we are not yet there yet. But when the battle is over, we shall wear the crown, said the master. We shall wear the crown. And in one of the scriptures, in the Sermon from the Mount, in Matthew 24, verse 46, it says, "Blessed is that servant, whom his lord, when he commit, shall find so doing." So we want to encourage us that God wants us to keep going, and he wants to see us faithfully serving with all our pastors, with all our, as a team, as a body, as the Northeast united body of Jesus Christ in the Apostolic Faith Church. So let the work continue. Be encouraged. The Lord has a thank you for each and everyone. He said, "There is a book of records for the faithful, and one day he's going to open the book, and your name is going to be there." Hallelujah. He said, "Blessed is that servant," that is you, "that servant," that is you, that is you, "whom his lord, when he commit, shall find so doing." Many times, you stayed in the basement alone for 10 hours, trying to make sure that the green light has synced with each other, that all the buttons are working right, that the time will, everything will work fine. All those sacrifices, nobody is there, but the Lord is there with you, and he telling you that you will be blessed. "Servant, whom his lord, when he commit, shall find so doing." Keep doing it. Keep doing it. Wait for a thank you. God has abundance. Even in this war, we heard on Thursday, now we marvel us. Now, people would think, "How is it he? How could it be he?" But God said, "A bruised reek, he will not break; a smoking flex, he will not quench." So be encouraged, my brother, so encouraged, my sister. The Lord is working with you, and especially the prayer leaders, those that are praying. God is going to turn things right side up. They said, "In the time of the apostles, they turned the world upside down." But this time, God is going to do it. He's going to turn the nations of the world right side up. But prayer cannot stop. But say, "He that is hungry and thirst after righteousness, the same shall be feared." He has brought us, he that too, and he will not leave us now. He will not leave us now, my Lord. He that too, he has brought us. He will not leave us now. So thank you pastors. Not this Thursday, maybe next one, we'll have to meet again to reevaluate. We will get in touch concerning that. But for now, let the glory be to God. Let all thank you be to God. In 1 Corinthians 4, verse 7, it said, I paraphrase, somebody said, "Touch not the glory." Because the voice that you are singing, the trumpet that you are blowing, all your sacrifice in the technology, it is a gift of God to you to use for his glory, for his glory. And he said, "If you receive it, touch not the glory. Let God take the glory." Let God take the glory." Be faithful to the end. God has your reward. God bless you. At this time, we wanna go into the next item is Bow the Knee from Wharton, New Jersey. And after Bow the Knee from Wharton, New Jersey, special, the next voice is Brother Lee, our general superintendent. But I wanna say this. Can you imagine a superintendent, district superintendent? Could you imagine the director of Apostolic Faith? And now the general superintendent? Come to the Northeast to show us the way, to lead us in the path of our elders, to point us to what is valuable, that we should walk in the way of the Lord till He come, which is coming soon. But we wanna be ready. We thank God for our superintendent, Sister Josephine, Brother Downey. And give grace and praise to God for our general superintendent. In spite of all the work they have to do, they humble themselves to take us along with them. God bless you. Wharton, New Jersey, special now, please.
There are moments on our journey following the Lord. Where gold and diamonds every step we take. There are times when circumstances make perfect sense to us as we try to understand each move he makes. When the path grows dim and our questions have no answers to hear. Bow the knee. Trust the heart of your Father when the answer goes beyond what you can see. Bow the knee. Lift your eyes toward heaven and believe the one who holds eternity. And when you don't understand the purpose of his plan in the presence of the King, bow the knee. There are days when clouds surround us and the rain begins to fall. The cold and lonely winds won't cease to blow. And there seems to be no reason for the suffering we feel. We are tempted to believe God does not know when the storms arise. Don't forget, we live by faith and not by sight. Bow the knee. Trust the heart of your Father when the answer goes beyond what you can see. Bow the knee. Lift your eyes toward heaven and believe the one who holds eternity. And when you don't understand the purpose of his plan in the presence of the King, bow the knee. Trust the heart of your Father when the answer goes beyond what you can see. Bow the knee. Lift your eyes toward heaven and believe the one who holds eternity. And when you don't understand the purpose of his plan in the presence of the King, bow the knee. Bow the knee. Bow the knee. Bow the knee.
Sunday morning greetings to all of you. It's a privilege to be participating in the Northeast Regional Revival Meetings. I've been blessed so far. And we pray for the Lord to meet with us this morning as well. We'll take our text from the Gospel of St. Matthew, chapter 13, and read verse 44. It says, "Again, the kingdom of heaven is likened to treasure, hidden in a field, the which, when a man hath found, he hideth, and for joy thereof goeth and selleth all that he hath, and buyeth that field." We read in Matthew and elsewhere that Jesus spoke in parables. In fact, at the beginning of this chapter, He says, "He spake," or the word says, "He spake many things unto them in parables." That's verse three. And then verse 34. "We read, 'All things spake Jesus unto the multitude in parables, and without a parable spake he not unto them.'" A parable is different than a riddle. A riddle conceals the truth. It is somewhat trickery to prevent the one who hears the riddle from discovering its meaning. And we see that in the days of Samson, where in Judges, he said, "Out of the eater came forth meat, and out of the strong came forth sweetness." That's a riddle that Samson gave them to solve. And we read in Judges 14:14, "And they could not in three days expound the riddle." So he succeeded in tricking them, although they subsequently beguiled him and discovered the riddle. But the meaning, of course, is what is stronger than a lion and what is sweeter than honey. So that's a riddle. A parable is different than a riddle. A riddle conceals truth. A parable is designed to reveal the truth. And we learned in Sunday School, those who attended Sunday School, that a riddle, or a parable rather, is an earthly story with a heavenly meaning. And we see as Jesus spoke in parables that He stimulated the mind with the intent of enlightening the heart. He provoked thought. And to those who were hungry for the truth, the parable was disclosed. To those who were hard-hearted, they left without understanding the meaning or the application of parables. But Jesus, in these parables, spoke in language that His hearers could understand in terms of the earthly story. He spoke of fishing, of planting, harvesting, of buying and selling, of baking, and so on, thereby baffling the scholars. But we read in the Bible that the common people heard Him gladly. So isn't that something? How common sense can somehow trump academia? In many cases, even in our days, where the Word of God is understood by those who are more simple, and I don't mean that derogatorily, in their understanding, while those who are steeped in books and study and all of that somehow seem to miss the basic points of the gospel. But in this, in this parable, we see that one found treasure hidden in a field. That reminds me of something I read a few years ago of a San Francisco couple who found 1,500 gold coins some decade or so ago on a walk that they were taking on their property. It's a walk they'd taken many times before. Anyway, those 1,500 coins were dated between 1847, the year 1847, and the year 1894. And they were buried in cans on their property. So somehow, as they were walking by, they noticed something there in the ground and did some digging and discovered these 1,500 gold coins dated in the last half of the 19th century. Well, as they discovered, the face value they discovered was $27,000. Well, that's nothing to sneeze at, $27,000. But that was the face value. The fair market value of those coins was $10 million. Wow. Talk about treasure hid and discovered, and that was it. When I was growing up on the farm, we were oftentimes convinced that we had found something of great value. And usually, it related to the bones of an animal that had died some years before as we were going around the property and stumbled upon these bones. It could have been a pig or a skunk or whatever. We had a lot of those skunks down there. We had pigs too. But we were sure as children that we had discovered the bones of a prehistoric animal. Surely, this was a dinosaur or a Protosaurus or something along those lines that had great value. And if we could turn them into the right people, we would suddenly be very wealthy. Well, there's no, there's no value in dog bones or pig bones or any other kinds of bones along those lines. And my parents knew that. But in this case, of the San Francisco couple, they certainly had found treasure worth using and of great value. Well, in this text, we see the kingdom of heaven is like unto this parable. So in this parable, we have the man. That would be a man or a woman. That would be you or me or a boy or a girl. We have the field, and that is our journey through life. We have the hidden treasure. That's the gospel, the salvation story. That's the kingdom of heaven is like unto this. So that's the good news that Jesus came to declare. Finding it, well, that is to discover it, to experience it. Selling all to acquire it? Well, an exchange takes place. Something that we thought had value is exchanged for something that we think has more value. And then He hides it. That is to value, to guard or protect something that we esteem valuable. So as we look at this parable, we see each of us is in the field. We're on a journey through life. We're maybe younger, older, children, teens, parents, whatever. Each of us individually is on a journey through life. We're in that field. We're from a variety of backgrounds. In Jesus' day, there were farmers, shepherds, homemakers, tax collectors, families and individuals living life. In our day, our backgrounds are a bit different. Not too many farmers nowadays, I suppose, in our audiences. Maybe backyard farmers, perhaps as far as a garden. Or some of our people on this side have chickens. So they have eggs. They might view themselves as a farmer of sorts. But mostly, we're educators, laborers, medical people, finance people, technology people, as far as students and even daycare providers, those kinds of things. So a variety of backgrounds. There are optimists. There are pessimists. Those who see the glass half-full and those who see the glass half-empty. And I suppose those who can't even find the glass. But a variety of personalities. Some are encouraged, others are discouraged. Some hopeful, others hopeless. God knows the difference. But some have consciences that they view as being tender. And others have consciences that have been seared by the bad decisions that they have made. Either way, different backgrounds come from different areas. But we have one thing in common. We're journeying through life. We really are. We wonder about, in this parable, did the man stumble upon the treasure? Or was he looking for the treasure? Years ago, in our area, we had some, even in our church, who were self-described treasure hunters. They would go with these metal detectors. And when a lake was drained or even on the campground, some were perusing the campground and trying to find the coins of years gone by. Not sure what they found. Nor am I sure what they did with what they found. Seems to me like that would have belonged to the Lord. But anyway, I didn't worry too much about that then, nor do I now. But it just occurred to me. But in this case, I don't know if this man in the parable, it's a parable. So it can be whatever you want it to be along those lines, whether he was looking for it or whether he just stumbled upon it. But one thing is sure. He did not know that right under his feet, for a time at least, was something of great value that escaped his notice. Everyone is searching, whether they know it or not. Paul on Mars Hill observed the devotions of those who worshiped all these kinds of gods and even had there an altar to the unknown God. And Paul said, "Whom therefore ye ignorantly worship, him declare I unto you." And he let it be known that God had determined that all those who He had made, and I quote now from Acts 17:27, "Should seek the Lord, if happily they might feel after him and find him, though he be not far from every one of us." I cannot tell you how close or how far away you are from treasure that might be nearby you waiting to be discovered. But I can tell you that the most important treasure in life or the most valuable thing in life is not far from any one of us. That is the Lord Himself, the discovery or the experiencing of the Gospel of Jesus Christ. Even the disciples, when they came and went from different cities and even when they were rejected from a city, they were told as they left to brush the dust off their feet. But to add to them, "Be sure you know this one thing. The kingdom of God has come nigh unto you." Well, I should say, I, you know, I grew up in the Roseburg, Oregon area, about a three-hour drive south of Portland. And we lived six miles out of town on a farm. It's just amazing, as I look back, how close our family was to this gospel. In fact, I rode a bus to junior high school, Joseph Lane Junior High. And that school bus, every day for three years, our junior high was seventh, eighth, and ninth grades. So for three years, I drove within two blocks of the Apostolic Faith Church. Never knew it existed, but never saw it. But there, I drove by twice a day. Once in the morning when the bus dropped me off at the school. And again in the afternoon when the bus took me back home from the school. But not only that, when I was in a high school, oftentimes, we, after ballgames or events like that, would go to have pizza at Abby's Pizza Inn. Now Abby's Pizza Inn is owned by the Abby. I happen to know him. His name is Abby Broughton. His daughter Wendy was a good friend of my sister, who was one of the ones who invited her to come to the Apostolic Faith Church. who was one of the ones who invited her to come to the Apostolic Faith Church about the same time that I, shortly thereafter at least, came with her to the Apostolic Faith Church. But Abby's Pizza Inn is literally a stone's throw from the Apostolic Faith Church in Roseburg. How close I was. Even growing up in Garden Valley, six miles out of town, we lived only one mile or so from Jack Chastain and Wendy Broughton, who they would later marry. They were neighbors. But so close, we may have even ridden on the same bus without me even knowing of their existence. So, so close, and yet so far away, at least in my own mind. Even when I was attending Oregon State University, a buddy and I came up to Portland looking for mischief on a weekend evening. And we drove back and forth across downtown Portland. He was driving and I was riding. We never thankfully found that mischief that we were looking for. Ended up going back home to Carvallos, Oregon, where Oregon State is located, about an hour and a half drive away. But as we were driving back and forth, having a hard time knowing where we were, I would always tell him, as I looked down Sixth Avenue, "There's that Jesus sign." That was our church location in those days, at Sixth and Burnside. "There's that Jesus sign." Having no idea that within just a couple of years, I would be stepping in to an Apostolic Faith Church in Roseburg for the first time and then later on, visiting that very church at downtown Portland before it was eventually sold and provided the funds for building the new church where I'm standing here today. We still call it the New Church, even though it's 35 years old. But the point being, that treasure of the gospel, as we journey through life, we may look at someone and think, "Oh, they're a long ways from the kingdom of God." Oh, no. Nobody's a long ways from the kingdom of God. Every individual is one prayer from touching heaven and having a changed life. So we journey through life. The hidden treasure, as I said, that's the gospel message or salvation experience. And during Bible times, there wasn't such things as a safe deposit box or these big safes that some people now keep in their homes. No banks. So they would find a spot somewhere, remote, at least in their mind, where they would assume no one else would ever think to look for the treasure, bury it there, and then somehow keep a map, at least in their mind, if nothing else. And that's the hidden treasure. Well, the gospel, we find out in Paul's writings, 2 Corinthians 4:3. "If our gospel be hid, it is hid to them that are lost." Well, I was lost for quite a while through life. But it wasn't the gospel's fault. It was hid because I was lost, not because it was not close by or ready to be discovered. Jesus Christ, even today, the Messiah, he's in plain view. No one goes through life very far, or even through a week, very far, without hearing the name of Jesus mentioned, even if it's used in a profane way. Even within families, we learn. That I've learned that my mom and dad, who were not Christians, each had someone on their side, a grandmother, in each case, that they think in hindsight were Christians. So no family, it seems, is omitted from having experienced the gospel and finding it and valuing it as a great treasure. It's not always attractive. Isaiah 53:2 spoke of the Messiah being as a root out of dry ground. "He hath no form nor comeliness; and when we shall see him, there is no beauty that we should desire him. He is despised and rejected of men, a man of sorrows, and acquainted with grief." To come to the gospel, we must come by the way of the cross. And the cross is an instrument of death. How many come up against that treasure of the gospel but halt when they discover? They must confess and forsake their sins. But not only that, as much as each of us must confess that we are a sinner, that we need salvation, that we need to approach God in a spirit of asking forgiveness. Why, that is humbling in the sense that everyone tries to live best they can and good to neighbors, try to be benevolent at one level or another, good to family or parents. So to be told that we're not good enough, why, how insulting can you get? But that's not an insult when you realize that we don't measure up to God's standard, no matter how good we are. All have sinned and come short of the glory of God. But to that degree, this highly valued treasure is not on its surface appealing because it's behind the cross that we must come to and confess and forsake our sins. But just because the value of something is not readily seen does not mean that that value does not exist. It certainly does. So the treasure's hid in that sense. But the treasure's found. It's experienced. We can testify to that. Because when we were not looking for the Lord, most of us, I suppose, he was looking for us. Once in a while, we hear of those who, well, maybe more than once in a while, but who were determined to find God and sought after him until they prayed through. In the Bible, it says that we shall seek him and find him when we search for him with all of our hearts. That's certainly true. But some of us, at least, weren't looking for him. I'm not sure whether to title this section Treasure Found or We Were Found. The treasure found us. But either way, the treasure in this parable was found. He saw. There was a moment of discovery. "Hey, look it," he thinks as he's walking along in this field. "Wow, look at that." He began to dig and saw that, "Here's something of value." So what is with us when we experience salvation? That's the way it was with a woman at the well. She went into town after having seen that he offered water that she could drink thereof and never thirst again. Told her of her previous marriages and that the one she was now with wasn't her husband at all. He knew all about her. So she went into town. "Come, see ye a man which told me all things ever I did. Is not this the Christ?" Why, here, this woman of really ill repute grabbed a hold of something, saw the value of something that the scribes and the Pharisees and the Sadducees and the lawyers missed entirely. They did. But she said, "Come, see ye a man which ever I did. Is not this the Christ?" And they that were in the city came out to hear him. And afterward, now we believe, they said, "Not because of thy saying; for we have heard him ourselves and know that this is indeed the Christ, the Savior of the world." The common people, they responded. They saw the value that others missed. They found the treasure. They discovered it. They experienced it. And we see that they felt that there was more here to be extracted as far as value goes. They saw the potential. And that's what we see in this parable. In this parable, the man discovered the treasure. He went and sold all that he had to buy the field. I have a question about that San Francisco couple who was walking through the field and discovered what was $10 million of value in those gold coins. Did they just take the coins and run? Deposit them? Invest them? Or whatever? I know what I would have done. I would have done what this man in the parable did. He did not take the treasure and run. He wanted to buy the field because he saw that the field had potential. That San Francisco couple, I know what I would have done. I would have bought the property on the north side and on the west side and on the east side and the south side. Because if that treasure was there, there might be more. The gospel, it's not might be. The gospel is like a gold mine. You might see that glittery piece of gold there and think, "Ah, I'm gonna take that and run with it and I'm a rich man all of a sudden." But if there's gold there, if there's a nugget there, there's veins in these mines that run here and there. And there's value to be extracted, far more than what is seen on the surface. That's the gospel of Jesus Christ. No wonder Jesus said he didn't just take the treasure and run. He took and sold all that he had and bought the field because there's more there. There's more in the gospel than any one of us will ever extract in a lifetime. We see the value of it and we appreciate it so very much. He sold all to acquire. So an exchange takes place. Something of value or something we thought we had value. Our life, our goals, our ambitions, our dreams, if we had any at all. We attach the value to that. This is what I want to do. I want to live my life. I just want to do my thing. Well, that's really valueless in so many ways. We know that in the gospel. But someone who's not experienced the gospel yet, they haven't discovered that treasure yet, they're motivated by selfish ambitions, for the most part. We want to do what we want to do. So when we discover the treasure, an exchange takes place. We liquidate what we thought we had, which wasn't worth much anyway, even though we thought it was. And we exchange that for the treasure of the gospel. We live in a day of bargain hunters, don't we? I price check things. If I see something in the store that I think I want, I'll go online and check Amazon or eBay or whatever else and see if the same product exists for less money. Who wants to pay more than they need to pay? Or a similar product with roughly the same quality for less money? So we're bargain hunters. Everyone is. Well, with the gospel, it's a bargain at any cost. It really is. We're willing to sell all to obtain the treasure of the gospel. And that is certainly the way we feel about it. And it's not that the gospel costs nothing. It costs on two fronts. It costs God, his son, and suffering and shed blood. But it also costs us everything. That's what it is to take up a cross and follow Jesus, that instrument of death to deny ourselves that we might obtain the blessings of God. There's no such thing as getting God's best without giving our best. And we can't bargain or negotiate with the Lord either. He's really not in a negotiated mood. Never is. It's whether or not we want the treasure or not. Are we willing to give up what we think has value in exchange for a value that cannot be readily seen? Well, we want to do just that. We want to serve God and obtain the best that God has for us by giving him our best. And it's not that there were leverages. "Lord, if I give you this, then you'll give me that." No, 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 no. That's a negotiation. No, we just take what God gives. And he gives us a cross. He promises suffering. He promises reproach. He promises, you know, at times denial, all the time. Paul said, "I die daily." Even after he was saved, sanctified, and filled with the Holy Ghost, there's self-denial all along the way. So if you're looking for, to avoid that, the gospel's not for you. But if you're looking to make heaven, the gospel's for you. And the gospel is for everyone. He didn't promise an easy way, but he promised us a way that lands us in heaven. So that's a bargain at any price. We don't come to God because it's a bargain. We come to God because he loves us and we love him. We discover the treasure and we value it. So he sells all to acquire. Isn't that what Moses did there? By faith, Moses, when he was come to years, refused to be called the son of Pharaoh's daughter. He was a prince, the best of this life at his disposal, the future waiting for him. But he chose rather to suffer affliction with the people of God than to enjoy the pleasures of sin for a season. Maybe that's the key. He saw that the wealth promised in this life was only for a season, esteeming the reproach of Christ greater riches than the treasure in Egypt, for he had respect under the recompense of the reward. He saw beyond what most people see when we look to the future. He saw the end. He wanted to make heaven. He wanted to please God. And so he refused to be called the son of Pharaoh's daughter. It didn't go easy for him, but it ended well. And we have that assurance that it will end well. People value different things. Probably the most valuable thing my wife has in our home are photo albums of our years of marriage and our children and now our eight grandchildren. Over the last few years, she's taken them and stored them electronically. But no one else would view those so valuable. But memories are valuable. Why, I hearken back to March 17, 1974. That memory, that experience of salvation, that's something of great value. And it's not that it did not cost. Even Paul said, "Those things that were gained to me, I counted but lost. I esteemed them as refuse, garbage, in another sense, that I might win Christ." Well, if we had to lose everything to gain Christ, we come out ahead. After all, we brought nothing into this world. And in a certain, Paul said that we can carry nothing out. Godliness with contentment is great gain. I have an accounting background, and so I know about gain. I know about loss. But I also know a little common sense. If you start with nothing and you end with nothing, where's the gain? We want to make heaven. Godliness with contentment is great gain. And so Paul learned, in whatsoever state he was therewith, to be content. That's the treasure of the gospel. God can help us be content, no matter what the conditions of life bring us. And that's what we want. "Lay up not for your treasures," Jesus said, thinking of the theme of the Sermon on the Mount for these meetings. "Lay up not for yourselves treasures upon earth, where moth and rust doth corrupt, where thieves break through and steal. But lay up for yourselves treasures in heaven." I have some treasures. Someone gave me an 1882, I think I wrote it down here. But yeah, I did. 1882 Liberty $5 gold piece. 20 years ago. Someone who wanted me to have it. And she didn't have anyone else, as far as children, to give it to. So she gave it to me. So I looked the other day, just so I could know, what is that 1882? I mean, what do I do with that 1882 $5 gold piece? I'm not sure what to do with it. It's in my top drawer, actually, near my bedside table, only because I don't know what to do with it. But anyway, it's worth, near as I can tell, at least $600. And it looks like it had been in circulation, so otherwise it would be worth thousands of dollars. But do I value it? Well, you can probably tell, I don't really so much because it's not worth anything unless you use it. And if you use it, you won't have it anymore. You'll have whatever you used it for. And then whatever you used it for will eventually wear out anyway. So, well, you can tell it's a dilemma that doesn't really bother me nor do I really think about it. But the point is, the treasures of this life are just that way. They're futile. They're useless. What are you gonna do with them? There's something more valuable. "Lay up for yourselves treasures in heaven, where moth and rust do not corrupt, nor where thieves will break through and steal." If someone came into my home, and now everybody knows where it is, just go right there. Just help yourself. And left, I would feel no better or any worse. I'll probably end up giving it to my children. If anything, it's a burden to me. So I need to give it to them right away. But I have two kids and eight grandkids, so I can't exactly cut it in half or divide it by eight. So maybe somebody out there will tell me how to resolve that dilemma. But the point being, the treasures of this world are already not so much treasures after all. We want the treasures of heaven. Consider what you gain to... Consider what you gain to obtain the gospel. Consider what you gave up. Sin, condemnation, guilt. And what do we gain? No wonder it's a treasure. Peace, assurance, hope. That's why it's a bargain. You can't lose. We, we thank God for the, the treasure of the gospel. It's, we have access to more than what a gold mine would, would offer as well. So it's interesting to me that in this parable, that he stumbled upon hidden treasure. And when he found it, discovered it, we see, "When the man hath found, he hideth," and goes out, sells all that he has to buy the field. So the hidden treasure is now treasure hid. The value of the gospel, we couldn't see it, though it was in plain sight. In a sense, it was hid because we were lost. But now, after we obtain it, we value it. We esteem it so highly. We, we regard it as being so valuable that we turn right around and hide what was previously hid from us. But now we hide it within us. We, we value it. So that's what we do with something that we deem is, is very viable. We, in my wife's case, she digitizes those, those photos, saves them electronically because she values them and knows that the photograph will eventually deteriorate in quality. But electronically, she hopes to, that they'll outlive her. And they certainly will do that. I'm not sure how long they last in that sense. But the point being, she protects them. She values them. And that's what we do with the gospel. We, we value it. We have something that is worth experiencing and worth preserving. So here we are. You're in this parable. You're the man, whether he be a woman or a man, or a boy or a girl. Life, the life that you're living, that's the field. So you're the individual going through life. That field has treasure. And there's something of value, something with great potential that is not necessarily readily seen. But you find it. That is to say, you experience it. And it's, if you've not experienced it yet, it's there for the taking. It's in plain sight. You, you simply only need to commit your life to God in faith and in trust that it is indeed of great value. And once you do that, then you, you experience the, the reality of it and esteem it the way it ought to be esteemed. And that is to regard it highly and understand that it is of great value indeed. Once, then unlike the things of this life, which you must spend to use, and then what you, what you spent is gone. It's not so with the gospel. The more you use it, the more there is of it. It's like that handful of meal at the bottom of the barrel in, in the time of the prophet, the First Kings, or that cruise of oil that would not fail. Every day, the widow would use more. And when she went back the, the next day, it was still there. It's like the loaves and the fishes. The mom who packed the lunch saw five loaves, or five little fish and, and two loaves. And even the, the disciple who saw, "What are these among so many?" Why, they saw five loaves and two fish. But Jesus saw it had potential. He wanted to teach them that there's more here than meets the eye. And so it is with the gospel. And once we treasure it, value it, use it, we discover that therein lies the value. It still exists and carries us through from this life to next. So as we go to prayer now, if you've not experienced this great treasure, drop to your knees and ask God to show it to you. Embrace it, use it, benefit by it. And if you have experienced it, drop to your knees and thank God for it. And God bless you all. May the Lord meet with us as we go to prayer.
Eternal God Almighty, we thank you, we bless you, we give you the glory. We give you all the honor for what we have had. You have told us about treasure. And I want to declare for where our treasure is, is where our heart will be. We thank you because you advise us to lay up our treasure in heaven, where moth or rust you not touch. So we have come humbly, we have had your word. We want, O Lord, as you go through life, as you go through the life experience, the treasure hidden in life. We want you, O Lord, to show unto us all those treasure. Save evil now. We want your word to touch somebody as you have had. Even as you go on our knees, we pray for your power to come down. For it is written, behold, how good and pleasant it is for brethren to dwell together in unity. For it is like a precious ointment upon the head that ran down the beard, even Aaron's beard. But thank you because I want to declare that that oil could go down the beard like the dew of Haman. And there, O Lord, it would descend upon your people like the mountain of Zion. There the law commanded his blessing. Command your blessing upon all the men as we have had on Thursday, Friday, even yesterday. And we thank you for using our Supremity in general to bless us. Now, as you go to prayer, we pray, O Lord, that you will save, O Lord, you will sanctify. You will fill with holy ghost and fire. You will hear the sick. And as you go to pray online, we pray, as we go as seekers, to seek the Lord. We will hear from heaven. Our treasure, Lord God Almighty, will be revealed. And those who are playing around with their treasure today, they will find the value of the treasure, which is eternal life. This we ask, save, O Lord. Come to us, O Lord, as we come to you at the altar of prayer. Let your name be glorified. And Jesus, we pray. Amen and amen.